Good evening, welcome to City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 2nd, 2015. Could I have the roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
President.
Dan Hagan.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
JP Kozinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Riss.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Here.
We all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of August 5th?
So moved.
Okay, we motion a second for approval of the minutes of August 5th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Standing.
One abstention. Okay, motion still passes. Public speak time, if there's anyone here from the public who'd like to address the council for something other than what's on the public hearings, please come to the podium and state your name. Okay, not seeing any. There is no communication with elected officials, correspondents, mayor communications, Mayor Kadger.
Hi, I'll keep it brief. Our auditor just finished up today, she just finished up the 2015 municipal school spending report, so I thought you would like to, everyone have a copy. Barbara, I have one for each one of the counselors and I'll give you yours tomorrow, okay? So, I just figured that, you know, hot off the press, you could be, have the time to review it. Thank you.
Okay, standing committees, Rules of Government Relations, Counselor Riss.
Yes, Mr. President, Rules Committee will meet on Tuesday, September 15th, Room 1, at 6:00 PM to discuss the administrative code request, the name change of the ECA Plus Subcommittee to ECA Grants Committee. And as I said, we'll meet in Room 1. I'd also like to make a motion for a public hearing on the administrative code change I just mentioned, for next meeting, which is the 16th of September, at 6:15 in these chambers.
There's a second.
Second.
Yeah, motion a second to set a public hearing for September 16th, concerning the administrative code 15-4, the name changing of ECA Plus to ECA Grants Committee. Additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
That concludes.
Finance, Counselor Hagan.
There'll be no Finance Subcommittee next week, assuming we take care of all our business tonight. There are two items I'd like to take care of now, they were reviewed at our last Subcommittee meeting. The first is a request to rescind the two past borrowing authorizations. This was our, where we always have to put up the authorization to borrow, but don't, hopefully don't ever have to borrow, and it involved the promenade and the park, so we never borrow, I don't believe anything was borrowed, it was just set up there to match, or if the state grants fell through, but they didn't, so if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion. I'd move to rescind the following borrowing authorizations, as the projects are complete and no additional borrowing is needed for these items. Nashwannick Pond Promenade, $440,000, and Park, $195,000.
Second.
Okay, a motion a second to rescind the two past borrowing authorizations for the promenade and the park, any additional comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Our second item I'd like to take up before the public hearings is the request to dissolve the kennel donation account and move the proceeds to the Hayden Animal Trust Fund, which is also a city account. This was discussed also in Subcommittee, and the mayor may want to speak on to this one. This, I believe, the kennel donation account had been around for many years, it was a project in the schools, I believe, by a former teacher, Deb Smith, and they raised quite a bit of money, or had hoped to, $4,000, little over $4,000, hopefully to build a kennel or help build a kennel, and we, now that we've moved to having, moving the services out of East Hampton, the mayor has no plans to build a kennel, so, and I believe the mayor could speak to talking to Deb Smith, but I believe it was her understanding that she'd like to move this fund to the Hayden Fund, which is a fund that is also a city account, that if animals are hurt, they come out and take care of the animal, and if the person can't pay, I believe there's a $50 stipend that goes to the, if you would.
Thank you. We had a lot of conversations with Deb over the, over the last few years, especially recently, and we spent a lot of time talking with her and discussing it with her, and, you know, what the best use that she feels, you know, her students, and there was actually other teachers and administrators involved in raising the funds, and she's checked with all of them, and they've, we've had meetings together, and she's viewed the Westfield Animal Control Services, and, and they all agree that they would like to, you know, put the funds for injured animals. Now, as Counselor Hagan stated, we do have the Dr. Hayden Animal Fund, that doesn't necessarily, there were a couple of, a couple of restrictions, or requests, that Deb wanted to put on it. One was that it's only for dogs, and it's only for East Hampton dogs, doesn't mean, does not mean they need to be medically treated in East Hampton, you know, there's other veterinarian services, but that was her request, and that was the consensus of, of the four of them. And we were asked, I don't know if it was, was it you JP that asked about maybe getting a letter from her?
That was my request.
Yeah.
If possible.
So, I talked to her about it, and she said, "No, no problem at all," and I noticed that I hadn't received anything, so she said that they, something will be forthcoming today, which is probably, you know, coming through as, as we're up here, and, and, but those were the only restrictions that, oh, the other thing is, it's a little over the $4,000, and sometimes when trusts are started, you can only use the interest, and she felt that that would be foolish, so she wanted to make sure that, you know, the whole amount could be used, because obviously the interest on that wouldn't be very much, wouldn't pay very, very much of any type of medical bill. So, I didn't know if anyone had any specific questions.
Mayor, as I recall our conversation, while she wanted this used specifically for dogs and injured dogs, there is other money in the Hayden Fund, so if, like, a cat is injured, they still can come out and use, it would just be taking other money that's in that fund, as opposed to this money that's going to be sent.
That's absolutely, that's absolutely correct, and we, and, we, and again, you also know that we have services through Westfield Animal Control, Animal Control for our dogs now, and we have been treating, you know, if they're, the police get a call in the middle of the night of an injured cat, that's also treated, yes.
All right, and as I, I'm glad you passed out.
I passed out? How long was I out?
Yeah, exactly. For the information on the Hayden Animal Trust Fund, and it goes all the way back to 1986, and a lot of it has kind of been outdated.
Right.
Like they mentioned, that the designation of the officer, the funding would be by the dog officer, I believe, or, and there's references to a select boards, and, and also the money at that time was $50, which in today's seems to be inappropriate, so I think, I had mentioned to you that I, you know, we'll resubmit this and try to bring it up, because I think it's a little bit outdated.
Right. I agree.
But, of course, all you passed out, I can't remember what I was going to say. But I'm sure it was very important.
That you'd like to update.
Yeah, we're going to update this.
Definitely needs some updating, seeing how it.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, I know, so the way this money is used, this isn't like you take your vet, your dog, I'm sorry, take your dog in for a spay and you can ask for money. This is like, in the middle of the night, emergency, we need to stabilize the animal kind of money, is that the situation?
Right, right, or, you know, or in emergency situation.
Right.
And, you know, and unfortunately, the, the money isn't going to, you know, last forever.
Right.
$4,000 in, in these medical times, isn't a lot.
Right.
So, but yes, it could be used for that.
Okay, great, so my questions, anyone else questions for the mayor concerning this? Okay, thank you. Did you want anyone else to speak on this?
No, I was just, Counselor Kozinski has concerns that he had asked for the letter, and he might want to wait till next to see if it comes through, I mean, again, I'd leave that up to the committee before I, you know, make a vote.
I think my thought was procedurally, and, and the mayor, I think, agreed that we would seek the letter, because the, the funds were raised as a fundraiser at the schools, and the teachers coordinated the fundraiser, everyone else said, "We're going to have a shelter for dogs, and we're going to build it, and it's going to be in East Hampton, we're going to take care of animals." And the money was raised, and it sounds like everybody's in agreement, but I think the I should be dotted and the T's crossed, that there should be a letter to just document that before the council says, "Well, we're not going to build a shelter, but we're going to take these funds and use it for something else," something that makes sense, I think, I would certainly agree with that, but just procedurally, I guess I would ask us to wait, is my thinking.
And JP, I have no problem with that at all. The letter should have been as of today, and again, you know, that, there's no apologies needed, she was apologizing, you know, with the summer, there's no apologies needed, you know, so I said, "It's, it's fine, we didn't get it," you know, when we did, but I have no problems waiting on this and, and providing you with the letter, because it does also state that it's a consensus of everybody involved, so, I don't, you know.
Yeah, I'd be fine with it.
We could just move this over to the 16th, I mean, it's not in need of a public hearing anyway.
No.
I'll just bring it back.
Okay, great.
And, other than that, it's, there's a couple of finance items that are on the public hearings tonight, and other than that, finance is concluded.
Okay, thank you. About five minutes, you can probably do one or two more. Public Safety, Counselor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we have been looking at the Paul Street Extension, and we all went out and did a site visit, and we're all kind of in agreement that it doesn't even look close, so at our next meeting, which is going to be on September 15th at 5:00 PM in Room 1, I'm hoping we'll be able to talk about whether or not this actually needs to go back to planning. There were some concerns with the entrance to the Pasquamik Conservation Area, that the developers, it's completely covered with dirt, there's no entrance, and one of the reasons we were asked to expedite this is so that they could put in a sign, but there's, everybody was kind of surprised that this had been put forward for acceptance, so we're going to have to talk about the next meeting and then maybe see where we're at.
Okay.
And then, the street acceptance protocol is being reviewed by the Planning Department at their next meeting.
Right.
Thus concludes.
Thank you. Counselor Smith for appointments today, I believe.
Do you want me to open it first? Or do you want, okay.
Oh, I, I, okay.
Go ahead.
Appointment's meant today at 5:40, we had one application to review, and that was Beth Tiffany, and this was for serving on the Nashwannick Pond Steering Committee, and since she is a relative of Joy Winnie's, Joy abstained from actually voting on this, so the vote was two to zero in affirmation of asking her to be on the board. So, moving it to council, making a motion to accept Beth Tiffany to the Nashwannick Pond Committee for term expiration of 12/31/16.
Second. Okay, a motion a second to accept the appointment of Beth Tiffany to Nashwannick Pond Committee, termination 12/16. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. I guess we're pretty close to public hearing time, so entertain a motion to.
Will we open the public hearings?
Second. Motion a second to open public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. It's like, finance to begin with, Counselor.
Yeah, I'll do a second reading on our first interdepartmental transfer, this is a request from July 29th, 2015, requested amount is $1,295 to be transferred from the reserve fund in that amount and transferred to the ambulance maintenance agreement, agreements, excuse me, to provide funds for outstanding, an outstanding bill from May of 2014 for cardiac monitoring services. The chief came to the Subcommittee meeting and stated that this was a bill that, when they went to re-up our services for cardiac monitors in the ambulances, they found out from Phillips, Phillips Medical, that they had sent out one invoice and never sent anything back out to the city, so it just was kind of a bookkeeping area that had slipped through, but if the chief wants to get up, he doesn't have to, but if he wants to get up and.
Haven't been here a while, figured you missed me. We had entered into a two-year agreement with Phillips, who is the manufacturer of one of our cardiac monitors, and in year two, they sent one invoice, six months in, we thought it was just a duplicate, never heard from again, until this year, when, or last fiscal year, actually, in the spring, when we called them to renew, they said, "You can't renew because you still owe us from 2014." We never got a second notice, a late notice, so we explained to them that it was going to be a long time now before they got their money. The good news is that they haven't charged us any late fees, because they realized that they were partly to blame in this oversight as well, so.
Okay, any questions for the chief? So, anyone from the public who'd like to address the council concerning this appropriation? Okay, same, okay, Counselor Hagan?
There's no other question, I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the following interdepartmental transfer in the amount of $1,295 and transfer it from the reserve fund and transferred into the ambulance maintenance fund for the purpose of paying a May 2014 cardiac monitoring service outstanding bill.
Second.
Okay, a motion a second for the departmental transfer of $1,295 for paying outstanding bill, any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Second public hearing involving, involving finance tonight is also a supplemental appropriation, of $28,000 to purchase, it's actually, let me explain this one a little bit further, it's an interdepartmental transfer, and I'll do a second reading, but I guess I'll look a little to Counselor Riss for rules thing. What, what we did here is we did amend it, we approved it both ways, the first way that we got it and amended, because what we were looking to do here is, the original amount requested was $21,000, but the chief came back with a, after he was calling about if we could provide this stretcher, the company said, "If you buy two of them, they'll give us two for $28,000," and that would outfit both of our ambulances with one of these power stretchers, so the Subcommittee felt that it was beneficial to the process of buying two at the same time, so we did want to move the amended motion first, so I guess unless we're at some type of rules problem, do you have any?
No, you've read it, and I believe, because we've read the original motion, the first reading at the August meeting, you should be fine, because it's also been advertised.
Okay.
So, we're, we're okay. I don't know if you have to even amend it, you just have to read the final motion, because the finance committee and the mayor have an agreement, having amended it, so you only have to move the final figure, I think.
Then I'll do the second reading, it's dated August 13th, 2015, request is hereby made for the following appropriation, amount requested is $28,000 to be transferred from the reserve fund in that amount and transferred to the ambulance capital fund for a Stryker Power Lift Stretcher. It's actually for two of them. Obviously, the purpose is to outfit both our first line ambulances with these stretchers, and I guess I would ask the fire chief or the mayor to come forward and.
You know, thank you for accepting the amendment, and also pointing out that it's, it's two power lifts now. The chief came to me to bring to my attention, you know, some safety concerns, and what would be his number one capital request, and as you know, free cash is normally not certified till the October time, and so usually we don't come to you with requests until after that, but this is a capital request. We have three ambulances, the older of the three, you know, has the, has a, has the lift stretcher, but when the chief started looking into it, it became an issue where, you know, he thought it was a safety, safety concern, and anything we can do to expedite, you know, the capital, the capital request of this, so that's why, as you notice, we're using the reserve fund, instead of what we would typically probably use would be free cash. So, this would, as he was checking prices, by going direct to the manufacturer, that's where he was able to get this type of price, so we thought it was actually pretty exciting that instead of one for $21,000, by going direct through the manufacturer, we're able to get two of them for 28, so it just made sense to do them both now. The original intent was to do one now, you know, just to expedite it, and then wait when free cash is certified and come back to you for the other one, so that's, you know, what this is, and that's why it's amended.
That's right. Mayor, just, this was out of that new capital stabilization account that we just created this year, right?
Nope, this, we just took this, we just took this out of regular reserves.
Regular reserves, okay.
Yep, yep.
So I knew it wasn't capital items.
Yep.
I want to make sure she speaks before she passed out, Counselor. The reason this is, has a priority, the last, two of the last three disability retirements have been due to back injuries, for members that had less than 10 years on a job. Both of those injuries were lifting patients on stretchers. As the mayor said, we have a power lift stretcher, it's in our oldest ambulance, it was purchased new at the ambulance in 2006. Last year, we spent about $700 repairing parts on it, because it's old technology. These stretchers, while I, while I look at the price and look at what a stretcher costs, it's a little inflated, I think, but it's medical equipment, they can get away with it. However, the cost to the city in overtime in retirement of two members with 10 years or less is probably tenfold on what these stretchers are, so I think it's needed, we don't have the manpower all the time to go with more than two people, we're finding larger and larger patients, a lot of elderly that are bedridden, it's extremely difficult to lift them with just two people. With this stretcher, you put the wheels on the back of the ambulance, you push a button and the legs come up, you wheel them out, same thing when you're taking it out, what that does is allow both people to be on the end of the stretcher and hold it. With the current stretcher, one person is holding all the weight while the other one picks up the legs, so the person that's holding it, not only you're holding a 200, 300 pound patient, but you have to be squeezing a trigger to unlock the wheels, so there's a lot going on, a lot of risk for injury. They said these new ones, you just push a button, the wheels come up. There's another model, believe it or not, this is the cheap one, it looks just like the trash truck that, with the arm that grabs the trash can and throws it in, they make those for stretchers. Those are about $30,000, we didn't go for that option, we went for the regular stretchers, but I said, the cost of these stretchers will be outweighed by the savings. We just had a firefighter out three weeks with a back injury, lifting a patient, two people, a large patient that was in cardiac arrest, didn't have the adequate manpower, tried lifting the weight of the patient by himself, and he was out of work for three weeks, cost us a lot of overtime, so these stretchers will pay for themselves.
Any questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to address the council concerning this appropriation, please feel free to come up. Okay.
Make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the interdepartmental transfer in the amount of $28,000 from the reserve fund to the ambulance capital Stryker Power Lift Stretcher.
Second.
For two.
Okay, a motion a second to approve the departmental transfer of $28,000 from the reserve fund for the two Capital Stryker Power Lift Stretchers. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Final public hearing on a finance item tonight is a supplemental appropriation, and this is the one that comes from capital stabilization. It's dated July 29th, it's the second reading, 2015, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, amount requested is $45,000 to be appropriated from capital stabilization and appropriated to the Park and Rec Office in that amount. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to provide funds to purchase a new office space for the Park Department. I guess Mr. Mason can come up and give us the particulars, but this is a request of $45,000, I think it's going to be matched by funds that the Park Department also has, already has, from fees in that of $45,000, so the total cost of this, I'll call it a modular office, there's a, everyone should have got a packet, which kind of explains it, anybody that goes down to the park and sees what they're currently working out of its, I think, a need, I know that the director would probably like something fancier, but I think at least this is a, it'll make it safer for the employees and at least weather tight, so if Mr. Mason would like to come forward.
John Mason, Parks and Recreation, yeah, we're, you know, we're kind of easy to please down there, we don't ask for, you know, big fancy things, we just try to find what's adequate. We went with this type of office setting, because it's affordable, it can be done reasonably quickly, before the first of the year, we can be in, in a new facility, and our present office trailer is, is pretty awful, I'll have to be honest with you, leaks, freezes during the wintertime, it's, it's, it's not ideal at all, so we, I did a, a lot of research, trying to come up with the best, best way to keep the cost down for the city, we know what kind of financial state we are in with the city, the Park and Rec Commission offered up a 50% match, so we're going to, we're going to put $45,000 into the project and have the city match it for the $90,000 total. I was doing some light reading of our five-year plan, strategic plan, back in 1998, and highlighted was building needs way back 17 years ago, it was identified as inadequate, lack of storage, inefficient to heat, things like that were all mentioned back in 1998, so here we are today, you know, ready to move forward and get into something that's, that we think, you know, 20, 25, 30 years easily out of, out of this space, maybe more, you know, but it definitely is a cost-effective way for us to be in a facility.
Counselor Riss?
I apologize, I missed the finance committee meeting, but for the public who might be watching, where is it going to be built, and how big is it, square footage-wise, how many offices, et cetera?
It's, it's 26 by 48, three offices, has reception area, conference area.
Similar to the old office, in a sense?
Twice the size of that.
Twice the size?
Twice the size of the, of the office, so it's 1,300 square feet of office space and storage space.
Built in the same location as the old?
Same location, as we're in right now, yep.
As part of this?
That one, that one, that one's getting pulled out and gone, and then.
And the cost includes demolition?
There's no demolition, it's, you pull a tractor trailer up, you pop the wheels on it, and you, you pull it and you're gone. It's a trailer.
I'm talking about the very old building, not the trailer.
Oh, no, the building's staying, this is, this has taken over the, the trailer, where the trailer is, it's going where our office trailer is currently.
Oh, okay.
We can't, we, the, that we turned into the shop, that, all the office is strictly, you know, where, where my office was when I first got here in Ed's for a number of years is the tool shed area now, and then you'll have.
So they're using it, though.
Yeah, they're using it for maintenance, yes, to, to bring in some of the equipment that used to be stored outside, so.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Winnie?
So this is a stick build, ground up?
No, it's prefab.
Okay.
Modular, yeah.
That's what I thought, modular.
Okay, so it's prefab modular?
Two-piece, yeah.
Do you have to pour a footing or a slab or something you're putting on?
Exactly, exactly, yep, yep.
And heating is going to be?
Propane.
Okay, forced hot air?
Uh, yes, yep.
Excellent. Additional questions for, just one, oh, second.
And the matching funds comes from the Richmond Fund?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Right, that's one of the funds you have that.
Yep. I believe that's it, thank you very much, Mr. Mason. Fantastic, thank you.
If there's anyone else from the public who would like to address the council concerning this appropriation, please come up. Okay, not seeing any, Counselor Hagan?
I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve a supplemental appropriation, the amount of $45,000, that it be appropriated from capital stabilization and appropriated to the Park and Rec Office, to purchase a new office space for the Park Department.
Second.
Yeah, motion a second for supplemental appropriation of $45,000 from capital stabilization for Park Rec Office, just one quick comment.
I just wanted to say, we kind of passed over the Barbara Richmond Fund, we're talking about a modest investment to gain a lot of office space, and this, this, this money, I'd like to say thank you again, was donated by a woman who left her, her, much of her estate, a house, I believe it was, that was sold, and the resources were available to the community for the purposes of recreation, it's, we're very grateful that we're able to do it, and I think this need has been long overdue, and I'm happy to say we're ready to roll on it.
Additional comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining, motion passes.
That's it for financial public hearings.
Okay. Counselor Derby?
So, the first public hearing that we have is for our fire code, and recently, the state changed the name when they adopted a model national fire code, and so now our local fire code ordinance doesn't match the new name for the state. So, this is to change the name in our local ordinance to match the state's.
Chief Moner, do you want to speak to any more, back, please?
I think Counselor Derby covered it, may throw him on the payroll in fire prevention.
Previously, Massachusetts created its own homegrown fire code, known as 527 CMR, and with subsections 1 through 50-something. They finally decided that there's an easier way to do business, the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, writes national consensus standards accepted all over the world, they're headquartered right here in Quincy, Massachusetts, but Massachusetts wouldn't adopt it. So recently, they, they adopted it, the, the only thing that's changed is the name.
The, the only thing that's changed is the name. So, when, when we issue citations, we, instead of it being five twenty-seven CMR, section four, it's now five twenty-seven CMR one, and then there's sections one through whatever. The code hasn't changed, they just changed the name, they, they accepted a model code, and in true Massachusetts fashion, we have Massachusetts amendments that are to stick to the code. But they just changed the name, nothing in it has changed other than the name.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the chief? No? Okay, thanks. Uh, anyone from the public who would like to address the council concerning this, uh, ordinance changing? Okay, Counselor Derby?
So, just to, um, let everybody know that we did vote three to zero to approve this. Um, and that was on the twenty-fourth of June. So, I would like to, uh, move to amend the city ordinances, chapter six, section six dash fifteen and six dash eighteen, by replacing the existing wording of five twenty-seven CMR with five twenty-seven CMR one point zero zero.
Second.
Okay, we're motion a second to change the fire code from five twenty-seven CMR to five twenty-seven CMR one point zero zero. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Okay, so, the next one that we have was a request that was sent to us, um, from the CPA committee. Um, and this is a request to change some of the wording in, uh, uh, the CPA ordinance to, uh, reflect some of the changes that happened in two fourteen that loosened some of the regulations. Um, and so, uh, everybody should've gotten a copy of this packet, but it has, um, changes, uh, that are highlighted in it around how we can use CPA funds. Um, and, you know, some of them have to do with recreation, some of them are how deed restrictions are placed. Um, but we did go through this, and we did vote three to zero to, uh, approve this. And it was, uh, requested and supported by the CPA committee, I believe it was, um, seven to zero was supported.
City plant, uh, Assistant Webb, do you wanna comment on this, or is anyone else from CPA who? No, okay, maybe.
So, a, as, uh, Counselor Derby stated, um, the, the committee did vote to, um, move this amendment request along. Uh, really, it just brings the city's, uh, ordinance into, uh, alignment with the state ordinance. Um, and as he stated, the, uh, loosening of the regulations for how CPA money can be spent, uh, specifically in guard to, uh, recreation projects and, um, what sort of, um, how, how, uh, permanent deed re, permanent property is supposed to be recorded when the city purchases land. And all of this is in the state law, so it's just bring the two ordinances into alignment.
Okay. Any question, Haze?
Uh, just, uh, as the city council representative or CPA, I just wanna thank Jamie because, uh, Jamie had to kinda push the committee along at several meetings to get this, uh, all approved, uh, the language. But, uh, as I said, it was more of a, just bring us in, in compliance, or I won't say compliance, but in, uh, a parallel with what's in the state ordinance anyway, I appreciate the work on it.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Haze?
How is it less restrictive?
Uh, it, it, it is, uh, highlighted in the packet that you should've gotten on, uh, June first, but, uh, you know, it's just an example. Uh, one of the things it allows, uh, for community preservation, it allows, including the consideration of regional projects for community preservation as opposed to just local. So, that was one of, one of the changes. Um, another one was that, uh, it would be allowed for the rehabilit, rehabilitation and restoration of historic resources, um, rather than just the preservation. Um, uh, so, those are just a couple of the smaller ones.
Additional questions for Jamie? Okay, thank you very much, uh, back to Counselor. Anyone from the, do you have the public? Anyone from the public who would like to address council concerning this topic? No, Counsel Derby?
So, just again, this was, uh, voted three to zero, uh, by our committee to move forward. Uh, and I moved to amend the city ordinances, chapter two, article three, division eight, section two dash seven-two, Community Preservation Committee, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee on May twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, and as shown in the document given to the city council dated May twenty-eighth, two, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Okay. We're motion a second to approve the, uh, changes to CPA ordinances, chapter two, article three, division eight, seven, section two dash seven-two. Additional comments or questions on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Okay, and our last one, um, was, was easy for us as a committee, and I wish we could've done it quicker. Um, we did, we did try to, uh, work with the planning board to get it done fairly quick, but this is, uh, a request to rezone, um, one nineteen to one twenty-one Main Street from R-five to downtown business. It had been changed from downtown business to R-five at a previous time. The property card never got updated. Uh, the petitioners went to start a business there under the impression, from the property card, that it was downtown business, to find out that it was not. Um, and so, uh, we, uh, met with the planning board, and, uh, the planning board recommended that we change it. Our committee recommended that we change it, so here we are.
Okay. Is there any one from the city who would like to speak to, I'll, let me, the city first about, uh, this? Okay, not anyone from the public, would you like to comment, or are you?
Thank you so much for helping us streamline this, and if anyone wants to come get haircuts, we have one nineteen through, uh, one nineteen through one twenty-one Main Street.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um. Counselor Hagen?
Uh, this property borders the downtown business, right?
It was right on the edge.
Yeah, I remember that when we.
It's right on the edge, and I believe the original change was because they wanted to put apartments down on the, on the ground floor, which they couldn't do in downtown business. Um, and so, uh, yeah.
I, I was, uh, did we do this somewhat recently? 'Cause I almost remember doing a little cutout when we were on, on council.
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand, yeah, I remember making that cutout, it was never done, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Great, any additional comments or questions before Counselor Derby makes a motion?
This was, uh, recommended three to zero by our committee. Uh, I moved to amend the city zoning map by changing the zoning of one nineteen through one twenty-one Main Street in its entirety from R-five residential urban to downtown business.
Second.
Okay, we're motion a second to change the zoning from one nineteen, one twenty-one Main Street from R-five to downtown business. Any additional questions, comments?
Just one, no, no other abutters came forward like opposing, right?
No. Okay. Counselor Kozelski?
As one who relies on property cards as a business, uh, in real estate, I, may I extend our apologies as a city, as a community, that someone would go ahead and rely on the property cards to come to find out that it may not be the case and then to be held up so long, I apologize.
I've pulled a lot of property cards from many, many different, you know, areas of western Mass and central Mass, and they're not always up to date, it, it happens.
Thank you so much for your patience.
You know, thank you for helping us streamline this.
Any other questions or comments concerning this? Okay, Counsel Derby? Oh, you made that, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Move, move the public hearings to be closed.
Second.
Motion a second to close public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. I think we were left, uh, at ordinance, Counselor Derby.
Back to me. Yeah. Uh, okay, so, uh, one of the things, just housekeeping, I, I'd like to do is I'd like to, um, request a ninety-day extension on our, um, the review of zoning, the sign ordinance. Um, and, and just to, for clarification, uh, we are working, um, with Jessica to, j, as we slowly move through the sign ordinance, if, as we find inconsistencies, keeping this on the agenda so we can fix them as they come up. Um, and, and so, since we've been busy with other zoning things, we haven't really gotten, um, to really dig into the sign ordinance as much as we'd like to, but I'd like to keep it on the agenda. Um, I would like now to set a public hearing.
Did you want the motion for that?
Oh, yeah, I should probably do that, shouldn't I? Um, okay, I'd like to move, uh, for a ninety-day extension on the review of zoning ordinance, ten point oh, signs.
Okay, we're motion a second for ninety-day extension for section ten point zero signs. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Okay, now, I would like to request a public hearing, uh, for September sixteenth at six fifteen in these chambers, uh, to review the request to amend zoning ordinance regarding home occupations.
Second.
Okay, we're motion a second to set a public hearing for September sixteenth, uh, topic being request to amend zoning ordinances, uh, especially home occupations. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Um, and I'm not setting our next meeting, but I would, I'm going to put out that, I'm going to try to hold it on September twenty-third at six P.M. Um, but I'm gonna confirm that with my fellow members and Barbara before I, uh, put it out there, but that's what we're shooting for.
And then be posted, obviously, in forty-eight hours.
Yes.
Twenty-third, you have another meeting next, so.
Yeah, it's not till after the next meeting, yeah. Um, and, and I don't know, this, I guess I've referred to Dan on this, but, um, I did set the public hearing on the home occupations, but we are at the deadline.
You're gonna report it out the next meeting.
That's what I figured. Okay, that concludes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Property, Counsel Seagler?
Uh, we have set our next property subcommittee meeting for September sixth, or, excuse me, September sixteenth at five thirty, and a location to be determined, and that concludes. Oh, I'm sorry, the purpose of that meeting is to discuss the easement request for Fifteen Cottage Street pedestrian branch.
Okay, so, thank you, and concerning the old business, uh, the mayor and I have been talking, we are still assembling, uh, getting applications for people, I think we both, you know, this is an important subject that needs to be handled thoughtfully and sensitively, so, you know, we're not gonna rush to grab the people, it's, we're gonna take our time to make sure we have a, that's the people who wanna participate. So, and I can't give you a date that we will be naming it, but we are assembling people, so. Um, so, at that moment, that's, uh, I guess, the meeting, so, you know, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
Second. A motion, second, adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.